I now call the October 24th, 2024 Young Community School Board Meeting to order. Please stand for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. My name is Debbie Edwards and I'm the school board president. Our agenda for this meeting is available on the Young Community Schools website. We receive a packet of information that summarizes 10 items a week prior to the board meeting. This allows us to read and study the material ahead of time and ask questions of the superintendent before the meeting. And Bill Walsh is excused and the seniors are excused because it's senior night.
Yes, we've got a lot going on tonight, so missing a few, but Haley is here.
Yes. Okay. So, moving right along. Audience, board recognition at work.
Yes, I'd like to invite Dr. Lisa Kierwitz-Smith up to kind of kick off this evening. I think a fun time for all of us to recognize some of our outstanding staff. And so let Lisa tell you a little more about that.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. Tonight's awards highlight the exceptional efforts of our staff who go above and beyond in supporting our students and creating positive learning environments. First, we have the Instructional Excellence Award, which honors teachers who elevate student learning through impactful instruction while fostering classrooms of dignity and belonging. These teachers inspire our students every day, helping them realize they can be more than they ever dreamed possible. Next, we're proud to present the Instructional Support Excellence Award. This award honors paraeducators for their unwavering dedication to student success. Through their guidance and support, they help create inclusive and welcoming classrooms where every student feels valued. For many students, our paraeducators become the trusted adults who provide the encouragement and care they need to thrive. So at this time, we're going to have each of our principals come up and they are going to read their awardees. They're going to share why they were given this award. And then they're all going to go up to a picture, shake hands, all of it. So we're going to have a nice, big crowd up here this evening. So I'll just ask our principals, in any order, to just please come up to the side over here and just call your folks up.
I'm Chris Clark, and I'm going to try to go first as there is a little football game going on where we found a wimpie at tonight. The first I'd like to talk about is one of our Spanish teachers, Alex Parker. Amazing teacher, probably the biggest impact, or one of his biggest impact coming as two or three years ago is his dedication to not only his students, but the rest of the teachers and creating our sunshine committee honor. Really recognizing when people are doing great things. We started a new piece going on, but Alex is at the game now. He does go to every home game. He is there helping out tonight because we expect a large crowd. And so he isn't here tonight, but it's Alex Parker, and so thank you. Then the next two ladies, if you can come on up. So we have Laura Stotter and Erica Tows. And her statement that we're a team is definitely understated. So they are the two ladies that have helped us keep our self-contained or CLC classroom together. We usually have four paras in there. They've been running or supporting the room as a dynamic duo. I've been in to help try to support when I can, but just two people that you can see from their dedication and their love for the kids that they work for. I guess, in my opinion, no better to deserve an award for this award. We did. You can hang your little lanyard with your names on it and YHS and a little gift in here. Not to try to upstage anyone, but the piece in saying that is I hope that you can wear these with pride moving forward.
Greetings, everyone, members of your board and community members. My name is Anthony Chicho. I'm the proud vice principal of Ridgeline Middle School. And on behalf of Ridgeline, it's an honor to present the following two awards. First award for Instructional Excellence goes to Mr. William Warren, an amazing social studies teacher. I've got some words here to describe Mr. Will Warren. The first phrase is that he's not here. But in terms of instructional excellence, Will Warren is highly organized. He prioritizes relevance to his students and he encourages independent thinking. Most of all, he makes learning really cool. That's Mr. Will Warren. Second, we have Instructional Support Excellence. And this goes to a very valued member of our functional learning seventeen, Ms. Sarah Hennessy. So here's some words to describe Sarah Hennessy. Yes, please give it up for Sarah. Instructionally, Sarah is a master at connecting with students and leveraging those relationships to maximize learning in the classroom. She's skilled in the art and science of differentiation as we have a wide range of needs and academic needs in the FLC. And I like to use the three Ps to describe Ms. Sarah Hennessy. That's patient, positive, and problem solver.
Good evening. I'm Mark Bothland, principal at Young Middle School. I'm here to honor two teachers, educators that are impacting student education at our school. The first one is Ms. Emily Macias. She is an eighth grade math teacher. And when I think about the idea, Lisa was talking about student belonging. You walk into her class and you can just connect with the vibe that's going on in there. She feels with the students, they connect with her, they have a bond, you know? You can see the communication that they have together and they want to work for her. They want to do their best and they connect in a way that they come back every year and reach out to her. The connections that she makes and the desire that they have to learn from her is amazing. The other award that it has another educator in our building, Crystal Anderson. She is our para that we are recognizing. Besides the fact that she is the only returning paraeducator that we have this year because of all of the rifts and movement, she is another adult in the building. We talked about the idea of teachers and paraeducators. It depends on the student who's making the connection, but she connects with kids in a way that they will go to her instead of the teacher. And she has also demonstrated a real leadership this year with all of our new staff. So neither of them are here today, but I want to make sure to honor both of them. They are two amazing addition to our staff. So thank you.
Good evening. I'm Strathwaite Watson, principal at Lackamas Elementary. And for instructional excellence, I'd like to invite up Sean Sturgill. Don't make eye contact. I have the honor of working with Sean as a teacher colleague and now as an administrator. And during this time, working with Sean, I have watched him gain confidence, grow as an educator, and becoming a true force to be reckoned with in the classroom. He is a master relationship builder and a humor extraordinaire. With his approachable demeanor and acceptance, he has a come-as-you-are approach to his classroom. But this isn't what he's really being recognized for. It is because he has a true dedication to his craft and being a lifelong learner. That's what makes him stand out. He strives for feedback, although sometimes uncomfortable. He has learned to take it in digestible bites and implement effective practice each day. I'm so proud to have him at Lackamas. And for instructional support, I'd like to invite up Kim King. Kim is by far one of the most flexible and willing paraeducators that we have at Lackamas. Students have the privilege of working with her continuously feel honored and valued. She meets students with grace, patience, and understanding, always giving them room to be who they are and hold them to high expectations. Her drive to support all students doesn't stop at the other end of the walkie when she's called for support. She is often the calm in the storm that we face every day and is so appreciated not only by our students, but by our staff as well. Proud to have you at Lackamas.
Good evening. I'm Becky Fowler, principal at Mill Pond Elementary. And this evening, Mill Pond would like to recognize two members in our SLC program, our dynamic duo Karen Blank and Jeanne Marsh. These guys are truly a team, like in the classroom and outside of the classroom. And their commitment to our students is like so appreciated, but they also are very strong in supporting our entire staff with training and supports and ideas. They're both lifelong learners themselves and multiple-time students themselves, which is amazing. So we just really appreciate you and everything that you bring to our building.
Good evening. Joanie Darman, I'm the principal at McKenna Elementary. And the first teacher I'd like to honor is Stacy Kinz. Stacy is an amazing teacher. She is someone who kids love. She meets every student where they're at. She finds a way to make it so that every student feels valued with their feelings, with what they need in the moment. And I was just in her class literally two days ago and her kids, it was phenomenal to watch because without them even being reminded, we're literally doing all the top moves and doing all the things that little first graders were shocked to see in October do. And it's just, it's amazing to watch her teach. It's amazing to see how much the kids love her and kids want to go back to her every year. And she graciously takes students in without question as a reward to them. It's just to be with Stacy Kinz again. So we're so honored to have Stacy at McKenna. Thank you. My next award, she couldn't be here tonight, it is Jennifer Tweaton. Jennifer came to us this year from Lackamas. Thank you, Beth. And she's been just a valuable asset. She is part of our LRC program and she literally came in and hit the ground running. It was like she'd always been there. The students absolutely love her. And again, she is someone that can make instant connections with students, whether they are five or 10. And she is just someone that has constant ideas and supports that even I can't think of, maybe even Jen and Powell can't think of, I don't know. But she's just, she's one amazing human thing and I'm so blessed to have her also at McKenna this year.
Hello. My name is Holly Ackerman and I'm a para principal. And today I'm going to be honoring two amazing ladies. So Felicia Stenbuckin, if you want to come on up. Come on over here. All right. So it truly is my pleasure to honor you tonight. She's an extraordinary special education teacher and she truly makes a difference in every child's life that she comes into on a daily basis. And I think I'm the lucky one that gets to work with you every single day, truly. Felicia's enthusiasm is contagious. Every day, she brings a passion for learning that inspires her students to engage and thrive. She creates a welcoming environment where every child feels valued and understood. And it is evident that her classroom is a safe place where students know that they are loved unconditionally, no matter what decision they make throughout the day. It's not just about academics to her, it's about nurturing the whole child. Her dedication goes beyond curriculum. She fosters a sense of belonging and is confident that she empowers students to believe in themselves on a daily basis. And she will go as far as to be Spider-Man. We had a couple giggles today about Spider-Man and even called in a Spider-Man voice to a student today. It was adorable. She'll go as far as she needs to to make sure those kids reach their goals. I truly couldn't do my job without her. Her unwavering support and passion for students really do inspire every single person in the building on a daily basis. So thank you for everything that you do and you really are making a difference in every kid's life. So thank you. Okay, now Lisa Beecraft, come on up here. She is a paraeducator at Prairie. And being near to the building, I just never really, I had these people in my vision and I'm like, ooh, Lisa Beecraft. Okay, so I have to talk about you. Today, I want to honor you because you are an incredible paraeducator. She is an amazing individual, just as you get to know her. She really has a heart of gold and she impacts students daily, daily. She has an extraordinary ability to support our kids and their learning with love and you handle them with love and you handle them with patience and you have a really genuine care when you work with kids on a daily basis. Don't look at me now. Whether she's working one-on-one with a student or assisting in a classroom, the warmth and encouragement creates an environment where every child feels valued and respected. What truly sets Lisa apart is her proactive nature. It was unbelievable. Time and time again, I'll be saying something that needs to be done and then I show up and it's done. And I didn't ask her, I didn't say anything. She just does it out of her own goodness. Your positive attitude is infectious and no matter the challenges of the day, you approach it with a smile and you overlook every single person around you. So thank you for your commitment, thank you for your kindness, and thank you for what you do for children every day.
Hello. I'm Lisa Crowell and I am the principal at Fort Stevens. And I would like to invite Emily Walsh to join me as I honor her for instructional excellence. Emily has been at Fort Stevens for the whole 10 years that I've been there. And during that time, she has always put her students' social, emotional needs first, before it was even talked about. That was her focus. She starts every day in her classroom with family time. Her students know that they are in a safe place to make mistakes, learn new things, and grow. I have students come up to me and tell me they are so glad that Ms. Emily is their teacher. We at Fort Stevens are glad to have her on our staff and to recognize her this month. And I count myself so lucky to have her help and support. She does all of my MTSS, she's my facilitator. Anytime I ask her anything, Emily's the first person to say, Lisa, what do you mean? So I am so happy that you're at Fort Stevens. Thank you. And then the next person that I'd like to honor is Tanya Draft. She works in our Learning Resource Center for third through fifth grade and she's unable to be here tonight. And I've had the pleasure of working with her since I arrived 10 years ago, but she's been in our district since 2009. During the time that I have been working with her, I have noticed her always thinking of ways to keep students engaged and to build strong relationships with the students that she serves. She makes sure that they know she is on their team and that they belong at our school and that working hard to reach their goals is not just a priority for her, but she instills that in them. So she's not here, but I'll make sure she gets that. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Charles Stup. I am the principal of South Worth Elementary. When I got the opportunity to look at our staff as far as who is actually honoring student learning for, as it says, "Learning through the impact to support and foster classroom environments with dignity and belonging," it didn't take long to think about who on our team has worked with me for over 12 years and always been there to inspire and foster hope and belonging for our students. So it was also one of those things when one of them has worked in library, art, in third grade, and mentoring many teachers over the years. That when we moved to the new building, we then started in kindergarten because you need someone that's going to start off at kindergarten to help you grow and know what it's like to be at school. And these two just happened to work together because I couldn't think of a better team to inspire kids and our future learners. So could I please have Tammy Thomas and Tammy Jenkins-Joelwich please come on up?
I am proud to say that I get to work with you every day and see you work hard with every one of our students and help inspire them to dream, believe, and achieve. You help working and inspiring your others. Makes me proud to work with you. Thank you very much to the board.
Do we actually have community comments and superintendent?
Yeah, I'd like to, before we jump into community comments, I think one of the things that we've been talking about as a board and as superintendent is how can we be transparent and how can we be more open? I think that's one of the things that we've heard over the past months is transparency. And I think that's always something that we can work on. I think, first of all, tonight, what you saw and heard up here, that is who we are. That is what happens in our buildings. Those are the people that are serving our children. We also know that we live in a time where social media often determines a lot of opinions, ideas, and maybe even shapes people's perspectives of who we are. But I think tonight is a very accurate picture of who we are. We understand that there's concern about a recent incident at Young Middle School and I'd like to share a little bit of information about that. A staff member involved has been placed on administrative leave while an investigation is being conducted, which is standard procedure to ensure the process is fair and thorough. We're working closely with Clear Risk Solutions, our risk management partner, to address the situation. An investigator will be on site early next week to begin their work. This situation is an opportunity for us to reflect and examine our current practices to see if any changes are necessary to better serve our community. The safety and well-being of our students and staff are our top priorities. We will share more information once the independent investigation is complete, but we ask for your patience and understanding in the meantime. I also like to ask for grace and compassion for all those involved, for students, for family members, and for staff. One other incident that seems to be traveling around social media that I would also like to clarify, and that's Young High School graduation. It seems that a lot of misinformation gets pushed out there and I think it's our job to make sure that we're sharing accurate and timely information. And I know that all of you, including Bill, agree with me on that. The failed letter required us to make budget cuts, including moving graduation from our Tacoma Dome. Jenny Hendrickson, a dedicated student, has taken the initiative to fundraise to try to bring graduation back to the Tacoma Dome for the class of 2025. She has already made significant progress. We have secured June 15th at both St. Martin's University and the Tacoma Dome. A decision on St. Martin's needs to be made by January with Tacoma Dome option available until spring. We are supporting Jenny through this process and following all necessary policies and procedures. A final decision will be shared in January or sooner if we know. I think most of all, it's important that people know that we remain committed to transparency, keeping our community informed, and working together to navigate these challenges. And I would encourage people in the future to go to the source. I sure have appreciated the people that have emailed us, that have called us and asked questions as opposed to putting false information out on social media. And what is also discouraging is that when, as a superintendent or as a board, you reach out to those people to invite a conversation, they decline. So I think as a board and as superintendent, we're committed to, in the future, in each and every board meeting, sharing this kind of information at the front of our board meeting before we even start on our agenda. So thanks for that opportunity. To jump into community comment, we do have one, Ashley Brooks, to speak on an agenda item this evening. You are, oh, we're going to wait until the agenda item?
I think you went now. Or you went now? I thought you went later.
Okay.
Hold on, we do the comments to the agenda item in the beginning.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the chance to speak today. I'm here to invite all mothers, fathers, guardians, and community members to join us in a movement we call Citizens of Young. We are focused on rallying support to pass the next ballot initiative for our schools. As parents, we trust schools with our children, letting our hearts walk outside of our bodies. While praying and talking about our children's needs are important, true change comes through collaboration. We refuse to accept mediocrity for our kids. They have incredible potential, and it's our duty to ensure they thrive. When we unite as a community, sharing ideas and solutions, we can become a powerful force for good. I invite you to become part of the Citizens of Young. Your involvement, whether it's an hour of your time, a skill you can share, or a passion to ignite, will make a difference. Let's set high expectations for our schools and ourselves. Hard work pays off, and together we can create a supportive network that champions our children's education. Imagine the impact we can have as we work together to uplift our kids and ensure they reach their fullest potential. So I ask you, will you join us in this mission? Together, we can pass the next ballot initiative and cultivate a brighter future for every child in Young. Thank you.
Okay. Let's say that in the comments.
Okay.
School board meeting.
I move with approval.
I second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. New business, individual contracts.
I move with approval.
I second.
Any discussion?
Just a couple notes. You'll see a lot of positions in the area of special education. We continue to fill those as we are able. Those are often determined at the beginning of the year based on student need. We can prepare as well as we can to anticipate, but often we're adding. This year is a little bit different also because of the cuts we have made. So a lot of special education, also coaching. And then one I would like to draw your attention to, a leave of absence on number two, Kim Gazi from RMS. Pretty cool story. She has been asked by FEMA to go down to the southeast and help with the recent hurricane. She's done this in the past, and they even wanted her full-time. But she is going to give them, I think, about three months of her time to help families to get resources, housing, just the basic needs. And I thought that was pretty cool to share that she was willing to do that. And RMS was more than happy to try to fill that gap while she's gone so she can go do that.
Any further discussion?
I just want to note that I'm extremely pleased at the choice for the head girls wrestling coach, Ben Hock. Don't think he could have found more exceptional people to lead the team. Exciting.
Thank you.
I noticed that there's somebody else on there too. Casey Wyatt?
Oh.
Yes.
Familiar face.
Yes.
A familiar name.
Yes, we have hired for Chris's replacement. Chris Hansen will be leaving us around Thanksgiving. We'll talk more about Chris. I have asked him to make sure that he comes to the next board meeting because we would like to recognize him. Casey Wyatt is a name that you probably recognize if you've been here for a while, and particularly as it relates to Southworth and Young Middle School. We're pleased to have her join us when Chris leaves. But it'll be a nice transition. Chris has been doing a fantastic job of setting the table for Casey.
Did they give you guys? No, okay, we'll fill you in. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Acceptance of gifts, donor. Wow.
I move with approval.
I second.
Do you have any credit point? You'll recall at the last party that one was presented. And then just pretty amazing, the generosity we have in the community as you read down that list. And the other one I want to call out is Young FFA alumni. They also presented a trailer at the last board meeting. This group is, is pretty amazing what they do for kids. I don't know any other district around that has a group like this supporting students.
Can I ask a question? Do we know how our...
Yes, we do know. Kyla was selected in the top four to present this afternoon, and she placed fourth. So very exciting. She's young, very young going into this, and so she did a fabulous job.
Fourth in what?
In job skills, which is formerly job interview. So.
Nationally.
Nationally, nationally placed fourth.
Oh, wow. Is, is she a sophomore?
No, she's going into her, this is her senior year. But generally, students don't qualify and reach that until their senior year, and they go after they graduate to nationals. So she's, she's young in that field, and they're really excited how well she did because she won't get to compete in that event next year because once you've competed at nationals, you can't repeat.
We're proud of her. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, our district travel.
I vote with approval.
I second.
And discussion?
This is our, obviously, our cross-country team every year. We typically take some students to state, and depending upon qualifications, that'll determine how many. But always excited to send our students. And I think just to jump on this, we recently had our first cross-country meet here at Young High School, and pretty amazing. And we'll talk more about that for just the time and energy that went into creating that course. But also for our students to have a home course because they have not. They had to always go somewhere else to compete, and for us to be able to help with that is pretty special.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next, Resolution 01-24-25, capital facilities plan.
Yeah, and we've got a specific resolution that Denise has to read. And then after you guys make a motion, then let Chris present.
All right. I move in conjunction with Young Community Schools' adoption of its 2024-2029 capital facilities plan to provide for imposition of a reasonable and proportionate school impact fee that the superintendent, through the chief financial officer, notify the appropriate jurisdictions that the district's school impact fee to be collected for 2025 shall be no more than $4,500 per single-family unit and $2,400 per multifamily unit.
So that was a motion.
Yes.
Now we need a second.
A second.
Oh, now discussion.
Okay. So tonight, this being Chris's last big presentation, I would hope that you would have lots of questions, a little bit challenging ones for him, so that we can make sure that he goes out. I don't know, I don't know.
By the way, we did not raise it from last year, but same price we ran last year. So no increase in fees. Your board pack does contain the next six years' capital facilities plan. It includes descriptions of all the sites, schools, and support services, student enrollment, past, current, and future. And I think on page 18, I think it's actually listed as "I," is the projected future capital facilities projects. These are, you know, hopefully we have the funding in the future to move forward with them, but it's just laid out on some stuff that I think we're going to need for our buildings to maintain and progress. Here to answer any questions you may have and recommend for approval.
It was a very detailed description and a lot of interesting reading.
It's a fun read.
Yeah. Yes.
The projections are usually, there's, the past projections are accurate. The future projections are all through Form 1049 through OSBI.
And I would like to thank Chris because he does a lot of work that other districts pay a lot of money to have outside vendors do that work. And with his knowledge, he's been able to do a lot of that for us. Thank you, Chris. Do we have any questions?
I, it was all-inclusive, but there was nothing, still, I think, it's, it's, everything that's in there seems like it's something that absolutely has to happen. There was nothing that had a higher dollar than that, or that, or that, or that, or that detail of what it was. Numbers, everybody is every year with inflation, so we try to, you know, make sure the same project for two years down the road will be a little bit more just due to inflation.
That was great.
Yeah, it's, it's, for me, very reassuring to have somebody like Chris continuing the detailed work and, and setting up everything very well for Casey. And Casey has tremendous amount of experience and knowledge, and so the transition is going to be seamless. But you wouldn't know that Chris's time is coming to an end. His work ethic and his approach each day has not changed. And so I appreciate your help, Chris. Business as usual.
Find him. Yeah, we know where to find him.
At the November board meeting, we will be recognizing Chris. And I've already told him that. As uncomfortable as that may be, he has been here a long time and made some tremendous contributions, and we'd like to recognize him.
I thought it was real interesting, the detail on each of the buildings. Great job. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks. So next we have Resolution 03-24-25, replacement education programs and operations. So I need a motion.
I move with approval.
I second.
Okay, discussion. Jennifer.
So Jennifer, real quick, she's going to share a lot of information. We want this to be conversational. Obviously, well ahead of tonight, I've shared with you a lot of information on bond, or levy rates and percentage growth. And so currently, the resolution, just to be very clear and open, the resolution on the table is $2.50 per thousand of assessed value at 3% growth. So if at any time during this conversation, there is a desire to change that, there will need to be a motion to amend the resolution on the table. Or at the end of this, you would simply take a vote on the current resolution. So just want to be very clear about where we are with this.
So you're going to give us a presentation based on the 3% cap?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Correct. Yes. And Terry was just telling me I'm short, and he moved the microphone. So I just wanted to add on to what Chris said about Chris's work ethics. So if you haven't seen around campus after he retired, you might have to remind him that he retired. So, okay, good evening. I'm going to go through some slides with you and, like Chris said, share a lot of information, and hopefully we have some good discussion. So starting with the excess property tax levy collections, so I'm adding this, this wasn't on the, there's no resolution for it, so it's not listed separately, but it's in the same, it's a one pager, it's in the same presentation. So as you know, we have to annually certify, as you know, we have to annually certify to the county by November 30th, our excess levy tax collections, which is typically our bond and our EPNO levy. As you know, we're only going forward with certifying our bond levy because we don't have an EPNO levy for 2025. So I just wanted to explain that's why you don't see a resolution. Typically, you do. That's because a lot of times what we budgeted and when our preliminary AV values come out, when we change the amount that we're going to certify, we're going to budget, and we have to do that by resolution. Our bond levy is at $7 million. It's been at $7 million for the last couple of years. That's not an increase. It is to pay our principal and interest on our bond, and so there's no resolution required for that. We're going to certify $7 million in our levy collections. I also want to mention that we are going to be recommending collection of administrative refunds. And I know you, board members, have been around, well know what that means, but for the new board members, you may know, but just explain for public too. Those are taxes that were already authorized last year in 2024 tax collections, but for some reason or other, they weren't collected. So there may be senior exemptions, there may be tax-exempt properties. We're finding out that the county may have been, been behind on assessing those and calculating those. And so there's been some changes in the senior exemptions in Thursday County. They increased the income, so those will be higher. So what we're seeing is a significant increase in the amount of those from prior years. And there's a lot of reasons for that. But I listed the amounts there for our EPNO, for general fund, it's almost a quarter million dollars. So, or total quarter million dollars, so $253,000. And our bond, our debt service fund, is $182,000. So our taxpayers will still see an EPNO levy collection on the tax statement for the refunds from last year that was authorized to collect. Sorry, questions about that? So I do want to also mention that the ESD, Chris had a superintendent's meeting with our regional ESD this week, and they're encouraging two things. They're encouraging every district to collect the maximum amount of refunds they can because of the financial situation districts run across the state. There's no reason to not collect that because it was authorized already and wasn't collected. And the other thing is to certify your max amount that you can regardless of your levy authority, but we won't be certifying, this is for the EPNO. A lot of districts, they might have approved $15 million in the budget because they were assessing preliminary values of assessed value, and they may have authority to collect $20 million. So they're saying, the county will calculate for you, and they will only collect what was authorized, but they're saying to, so you don't leave money to the table to increase it to the max you can collect. So that was just a couple of notes of interest. So that's all I have. Is there any questions about the excess levies? Nope, okay. And then the, so the EPNO, and I need to clarify, I'm calling it replacement, it's a replacement of our last authorized levy. We don't have any taxes for '25, so it's not a replacement for '25 levy forward. So our last authorized levy does expire December 31st, 2024. So we're going to go an entire calendar year, 2025, without collecting that tax. And we, that's why, that's two school years. We talked about that and explained that a lot. And 2% as enrichment levy. And I really want to mention this again, I've mentioned this many times, that it includes classroom teachers and things that people don't understand are enrichment. It's because the state doesn't fully fund our staff. So basically, the funding that we don't have to, to have that number of staff becomes enrichment because we can only pay for it with our local levy. So this is the exact wording, and I'm going to read it word for word, just so people understand. It's the exact wording that will be in our ballot proposition when it goes out in the pamphlet. So including, but not limited to, certified classroom teachers, certified specialists, RPE music, drama, library, technology, office support, parent educator, supervision, special education, nurses, counselors, social workers, school resource officers, safety staff, graduation career readiness, technology, athletics, extracurricular activities, curriculum materials, and staff training. That's a natural, but those are the things that had to be cut when we fail our levy. People think that special education, because it's required by state and federal law, that that's not enrichment, that we every year have to subsidize over $3 million of our special ed expenditures through our local levy because we, the state significantly underfunds that. If our levy fails, we can't cut the special ed program, but we have to cut somewhere else because we do subsidize it with a levy. Okay, so the EPNO replacement levy, I didn't replace, they clarified that the last authorized levy. So it's a four-year levy. levy. So it's a four-year levy, and it's simple majority, 50% plus one. They can go out to voters twice in one year. And the best times, based on historical data we've been provided, is February and April. Those are the highest rate of passage. And then I want to talk more about the authorized level. So it's the lesser of three things, right? So per pupil amount. Our per pupil amount is always greater than our assessed value, 1,000 per assessed value. So the ones that really matter to us and play into our situation is the 250 per thousand of assessed value and the voter authorized amount. So when we talk about authorizing the levy using different AV growth rates, we're talking about a flat amount that we can collect. So when we determine that rate, if assessed value was higher, we can't collect anymore. We can still only collect that 3%. We've had huge increases in assessed value over the last few years. Just within two years, it was over 40%. So using 3% is pretty conservative. We know, we talked about last year, how some of our neighboring districts used up to 8%. And so I listed here the rates, just to kind of show an example of over the last authorized levy, the rate went from 250 to start out, and then it decreased to 230, 202, 212. That was because of those higher assessed values. Some people think that the rate is lower only because of new construction, so you're spreading it out over more taxpayers. That's part of it. That's a smaller part of it than the assessed value is based on the increases over the past few years. So the larger part of the assessed value goes up higher than what we authorize, the rate is lower for every taxpayer.
Is that 3% over the life of the levy or per year?
We're authorizing a flat rate using 3% each year. So it's 3% and then 3% on that and 3%.
It's not 3% for the four years, it's 3% each year.
Exactly. Yeah, thank you for that. So is there any questions about that in our limits on authority? The next slide is just to show what our amounts would be using the 250 per thousand assessed value and AV growth of 3%. And that's what we included in the resolution to bring forward tonight. So you guys need to have a session and vote on that. So you can vote to amend it, or you can vote to approve what's in the current resolution. So I just wanted this note at the bottom, just to clarify again, if we use 4% rather than 3%, we would collect 1.725 million more over the course of four years. So I think based on what I said before, that's probably clear now. So those are the rates that we would collect for '26 through '29. And those are the amounts in the resolution. And then the last slide is just to talk about our requirements that we have to submit to Pierce and Virgin Counties by December 13th this year. The resolution was approved by the board. And committee members for four against statements, and that Terry coordinates that for us. And then explanatory statement for ballot proposition, and that's that wording that I read earlier on what is included in a rich for levy. So recommending adoption or discussion of resolution 03, 24, 25.
So why do we use the word enriched, enrichment levy?
That's the state definition.
Okay.
Of...
And we cannot change that?
No, we cannot change that. We have to submit an expenditure plan to them when we go out for our levy, and they have to approve it. So we tell them all the things we're going to spend it on, and they approve that. And so...
So we can't change that? Because the question's out there that, why didn't you call it something else?
Oh yeah, no, we can't change that. That's the definition that the state legislature actually put on it.
Okay.
Can you go back to the last slide that showed the dollar amount collected here? So at what point in this four-year cycle would we pay off the loss? Because we're in the hole with $8, $9, $9, not for not. At what point are we back to squeezing and then collecting it?
So I'm going to talk about that later, my financial reports, about where we are in the process of closing '23, '24, and starting analysis of '24, '25 projected fund balance, which I don't have ready yet. In my financial reports, I'll talk about that. And by the next meeting, I should have better amounts. But yes, it was... The last projection was around $8 million.
Because it's valid, I think, in this conversation because, you know, some of us may recommend that the 250 seems high, but since we're in an $8 million hole, we have to go higher to get out of that hole. So I'm just curious when we would be able to get out of that hole. Is it year two? Is it year three? Is it year four? Is it after? Do you have any idea at this point, what are the 250 in these collection rates?
Yeah, I hesitated until I started doing projections of '24, '25 because of all of the cuts that we've made. I need to start analyzing the data for payable, and I can do that from the September, October, and then forward because we know exactly what percentage over the last 10 years we paid out September and October. I just haven't done that calculation yet, but when I did the four-year forecast, it was about $8 million, then it went down to like 6, then down to 4. And so it will take a few years to get out of the hole. So I don't have an amount that we have to collect. I didn't analyze that, so.
The other thing that will contribute to that is how quickly we staff back up from previous staffing ratios to where we were. So that's also going to dictate how quickly. But the priority is going to be a balanced budget first. And then beyond that, we'll be slowly staffing back up in areas. Now, you know, obviously, based on the timing of the levy and that, you know, if it's approved in February, we don't collect until January. So you think about September, October, November, December of next school year, still no levy dollars. And then all of a sudden, in January, we start receiving dollars. Well, we can't staff back up to pre-double failure numbers in September, October, November, December because we can't afford that. But is there some staffing that we could bring back and bridge that gap for those months until January? That's something that we have to talk about. So we will have lean staffing this year, and we will be lean next year, even with the passage of the levy because we won't see those dollars from January. But the priority is balanced budget first. And then from there, it is restoring the numbers based on the priority.
I mean, there's a public perception from a good portion of the state, not just the community, that districts mismanage their budgets, which is a good reason for why it didn't pass the first two times, right?
Yeah.
And I think we went through this process now for months and proven that the system in itself is flawed, and there are so many unfunded mandates that we can't physically survive without levy dollars. But if those questions, when they arise, because they're going to arise, it'd be nice for us to go to explain why we have to ask to collect a 250, which is the max amount, and still hopefully maintain some of the cuts that we made that maybe were, you know, extra fluff to look like we're responsibly serving our taxpayers as well. Can you go in and explain a little bit, not just for us, but maybe for the public, on what happens in the event this levy does not pass this year and how the state gets involved? Because I think that's probably a pretty important topic for the public to understand.
I think first of all, and Jennifer had on at any point, first of all, we have additional cuts. We would be making the spring cut at around $10 million. And that's not the entire gap. Obviously, we left a gap of about $15, $16 million that we're now receiving. So for starters, we would need to continue cuts this spring. And when 85% of your budget, roughly, is people, you have to cut positions. And that's hard because we are already very lean. Class sizes are big. People are overextended in their roles across the board. It does not matter what the position is in our district. People are overextended and overworked. And we're having to decide what we don't do because of contractual obligations and hours in the day. And so there are things that are not able to happen because we don't have the people power to do it. So there would be additional cuts in staffing. And then the other 15% of our budget is material supplies and other costs. But there's not much there that you can cut when you're talking about inventory, you're talking about supplies, you're talking about, you know, fuel, you're talking about all the things, everything except our people. So if 85% of our budget is people, and we have more cutting to make, there would be more positions cut. Now, where those would be, we would have to take a really close look where those would be. We've already asked this year, all of our administrators and all of our district staff, they've gotten a 0% increase and have given up days. So do we give up more days? We've already cut parent educator hours by 30 minutes each across the board per day. We've cut our staffing so that class sizes are at trigger numbers or above. Everywhere across the district, we are maxed out. And so what that would look like, I really don't like to think about it too much, but we would have to go there. And we would have to without those levy dollars. There would be no question. We would be making additional cuts. And the other thing we would see is those cuts would be more impactful to our students. We tried to stay as far away from them as we could. We did have to cut C-team sports, but those were brought back through fundraising. Though we'd be cutting deeper as it relates to opportunities that we provide our students. Jennifer, anything that I missed?
No, no, I... Just one other point on the NSOCs we talked about. We can't really reduce it much more. A lot of us left is just our basic building operating supplies. And then other things have to be paid for at grants. We have to spend that money. So a lot of it is supply to grants. The state had a global problem.
But isn't it, I mean, isn't it fair to say that I don't think we can physically cut? I mean, the conversation we had earlier, is that $8, $9, without going against state mandates that are unfunded, breaking state law essentially to get to that level of cuts? And if you can't do that, then what happens? Doesn't the state then get involved?
Yes. So if, over the next two years, if we're not able to make significant progress, year three is really where the state comes in and starts scrutinizing decisions and expenditures. Right now, for the next two years, we meet with them quarterly. And those conversations are more of collaboration between the ESD and OSBI and us. And our board president or a couple of board members sit in on those meetings. And they're really asking about cash flow. They're asking about any fund balance. And it's really about, how are you doing? What is your plan moving forward? They do not scrutinize our day-to-day operations and decisions. However, if we don't make progress in year one, in year two, in year three, it's no longer collaboration and conversation. It's more of them determining how we're spending our dollars.
Right, right. They take it out of our hands. And they hire and fire, and they do all of the cuts. They basically take over everything.
Typically, when districts are successful with their levy, we have seen districts recover within the two years. The one exception is Marysville. And that is a unique situation. There are many, many variables in that particular situation. We are not Marysville. We are in a very different spot than they are. But typically, districts in those two years with levy dollars, break the ship, present a balanced budget, and move on and come off the binding conditions. But the one exception would be Marysville.
And in discussions, when we made the cuts we made, we knew that we would have to cut deeper, you know, and that, you know, junior... You know, just different things that were not in the classroom.
Yeah, but while we were making those cuts, we were aware that we were making $10,000 cut here, $20,000 cut here, $15,000 cut here, and everyone hurt, knowing that we had $8 million to go. And we would have to actually start making cuts that we're not even allowed to make without breaking unfunded mandates because we can't physically function without those levy dollars and still need state retention. I guess that's what I'm trying to dig into. If this doesn't pass, we're in...
Yes.
We're in trouble.
We're being rough in a hard place. Well, and the other thing is, you know, you hear or you see the comments about, you know, districts are mismanaging their money. And so for me, what I want to say, we aren't mismanaging the money. Just because we don't, as a district, spend the money the way that you think we should be spending the money, doesn't mean it's mismanaged. There's rules, regulations, guidelines that you have to spend the money. So if you don't think that the money is being spent the way it should be, then make an appointment, come in, and find out how it's being spent. Because there's rules, regulations, guidelines on things that have to be done. And so it's not being mismanaged. It's being spent the way that it's being spent because it has to be spent that way. I think the other argument that I would make to people who make the accusation of mismanagement of funds, when 85% of your budget is people, so which person are you going to go to and tell them that they are not needed? I would challenge anybody in our community to come find one person in our district that is not valuable. And if that's mismanagement, then we're guilty of mismanagement of funds, hiring great people to serve our kids. But I would argue that that is not mismanagement of funds. Because without the people in our district, we can't do what we do. And our students would not have the opportunities that they have. So I welcome a conversation with anybody in our community that would like to take a closer look at our budget and show me positions that we don't need. And then I'd like to introduce them to those people and let them see the work that they do. And then I'd ask them the same question.
And OSBI, I mean, they told us, they understand where we're at. They see that we're making changes. They see that we're scrutinizing all of our expenditures, all of our staff hires. So they see that. And in addition to what Chris said, that they're asking how we're doing, they care about how we're doing. They also offer their support. How can we help you? So they're very willing. It's a great partnership for the ESD and OSBI.
They do not, they do not want to see districts go to that year three. Right now, I think there's five or six slated to be in binding conditions this year. However, there are 20 additional districts that are on watch. That number is going to continue to grow. And so you can see that any levy failure by any one of those districts immediately will push them into binding conditions. And that number, unless something drastically changes in our funding system, that 20 is going to get bigger and bigger. They're always going to be teetering on falling into binding conditions.
Is there any movement in the legislature to understand this issue?
Yeah, you're going to see this session, I've said it many times, you're going to get tired of hearing it. But there's going to be three areas that education is going to be just continuing to drive home. Special education, transportation, and then the NSOCs, basically the non-employee related costs. Those are your healthcare, your, all your material supplies, fuel, things like that. So those are going to be the three areas. Of those three, the two that would really impact us positively would be special education, any additional funding we get there that allows us to back out the general fund dollars we're using to subsidize special education. The other one is the NSOCs. Any additional funding we get there to help offset healthcare costs and other things allows us to back out general fund dollars that we're using to subsidize those costs to use on students and staff. So those two in particular, transportation would not necessarily help us. We are... It's a wash there currently in transportation with the funding we receive and the funding of our expenditures. But those other two would help us tremendously. You're going to hear a lot about those three initiatives. Our legislators and our senators already know, and they can recite them back to you because they've been hearing about these for months already. And the new folks that are... And the new folks that are elected that are coming in, they already know it too.
I was at a function and they know that there needs to be something done. They're well aware of it. Now knowing it, hearing it and saying, you know, I know what you're going to say, Debbie. I get it. We've got to do something. Now if they all do it, great. But they are very well aware of the sentiment that everybody is there.
So to you guys, after let's see, I have something else.
So my question is, seeing as how I sit and do, accounts receivable and stuff every day. And I know we're in binding conditions and we have two years to dig ourselves out as a district. And so we cannot be in a third year with the state coming in. And I'll probably get killed for this. But wouldn't it be? I believe you've got to be there or something.
You're good.
Just say it.
Wouldn't it be smarter, physically smarter to go out for a higher cap like 4% or 5% instead of 3%? So that we have a little pad because we have two two years that we have to recover from.
Well, there's a lot of things that can happen. It's your decision, but we could do a lot of things. If you lowered the rate, we could increase the assessed value. It's kind of a wash because you're going to collect the same amount. So so yes, I totally agree with what you're saying.
Do you have an estimated growth in the area for each year? Is it higher than 3%?
So this past year, it was around 8%. So I don't have the amounts for next year yet. He may instead of preparing something for us right now, he may have some information that I don't have. So they were, it was very low. It was like 0.7% a year before. And then the two years before that was both years, yeah.
So it doesn't mean if we, if we went and put our cap at 5%, it doesn't mean that we were going that we were going to, to collect 5%. It just means that if it went up to 5%, we couldn't go over 5%.
So what happens if you, if you set your rate at 5%, you can't go over that rate. So if the assessed value goes up 670, anything about that, you're going to collect lesser, lesser than 250. Yeah.
And in the past, 250 is the amount. And then most other districts don't put a cap on the percentage. Correct?
Well, they go the highest.
They go the highest. And the highest is 8%.
8% is the highest.
I said it. Well, there's nothing that says you can only go up to 8%. They could go higher, but that's what some of our neighboring districts have used, is 8%. Or higher.
But at the 3% that you've factored in, it shows us getting out of a hole and having enough to function back to the level we were. I can only make the assumptions.
The higher we go, the less time it'll take to get out of the hole. So the lower rate, it'll take longer.
Well, that's, yeah, I understand that. That's basic math. I'm more curious about the 16, 17, 176, 181. I mean, that's got to represent what we need to cover our costs and get out of a hole. Those numbers have to account for some level of cost or not just made out of numbers, right?
Historically, our rates increased by however we calculate in the past year. Then go back and analyze and say what rate we lose, but they typically were around an 8 to 9 million dollar increase every year. When we passed our bond, we didn't go up at all. No increase. So we really were two years behind by this year. So we need to catch up too.
I guess I think what Denise is asking, I think it's another question, it's just are these numbers enough to give us what we need to get out of a hole and function? Because we have to justify these numbers. And if we need to go up in percentage to get out of that hole and cover the costs that have to occur, then let's do it. But if we don't need to, let's be responsible in covering the whole percentage. But I don't have any way to know what's what at this point. I assume that these are the right numbers and 3% gets us there.
Yeah, the variables that we don't know is what is the state going to do? What is inflation going to do for EMSoCs? And then obviously, the other variable that has become a big piece of the puzzle in all districts, it's not just the office everywhere, is collective bargaining agreements. And so a lot of variables you just don't know. However, I think you guys are trying to be mindful of what we need versus, you know, going beyond what we need. And so I think for us, 3% is very conservative. I think it still puts us in a place where we are still being very tight over the next two years in particular. But it does give us a lot more wiggle room as it relates to staffing levels across the district. And then in hopes of seeing some positive movement this coming session. So the two of those together would be, we'd be very hopeful that 3% would give us there, but certainly 4% or 5% would help and give us a cushion.
So if you're set, you between numbers. So I know I just thought of something real quick. But, but so if we lower the 250 to 240 and cap it at 6%, is that sort of a, and I'm not saying we're doing it, I just have to, in my, be frank.
Now, there's a difference between 69, 425 over the four years is 71, 725. Don't ask me to add that.
No, but, but then is that, is that enough? And do we get out of the hole for?
So none of these numbers are going to get us out of the hole in the first year because they're getting always in a better position to be able to start hiring back sooner.
Yes.
So
And all of it bases on the fact that we have to pass the levy, no matter what the amount is.
Yeah. In the data that I shared with you guys, I think I handed it to you through retreat maybe. Just to give you an example, if we were to go at 230 per thousand versus 250, that would be a difference of about $6 million over the four years. And so that just gives you an idea of what we're talking between $2.30 and $2.50 at the same percent growth. And that's a lot of money. That's a lot of money. And again, more than likely, even if we were at 250, at 3% or 4%, there's still a possibility that we're not collecting 250 from each taxpayer in our community. I think, you know, that says something. When people get their tax statement and it's 214 or 202, we also got to remember that the one after this, you know, and wanting to make sure that we're getting up to a level that we can sustain with our voters, that our voters can then be used to as opposed to dipping down. And then in some cases, I've shared this with you before, communities will not pass at that 250 any longer because they know you're going to reduce it. When the bottom line is, it's not about need. I think very clearly, we've made the argument that there is a need to to go at the 250. I think it's more of a matter of what you're comfortable with at the KDA growth.
But at the 250, and say we have, if you, if you where all of the houses are going in, we'd all like more businesses to come in because, you know, then we're not, it's not on a homeowner, the taxes. But with all these other taxes or these other rate of, you know, all these houses going in. If it brings in more monies, we still have a cap at 3%. So it could bring in 8% more, right?
Right. If it brings in more, then it's going to be distributed across all taxpayers because we still have a cap on the amount we can collect.
I think just based on all the conversations we've had and my conversations with you as a group and my conversations with you individually, I think the resolution that we've brought to you tonight reflects your wishes as far as knowing we need to get to the 250, but also respecting and honoring our community as it relates to growth in percent and what people can count on with their taxes from year to year for the next four years. So I believe as much as I would love to increase that percentage, I think, I think this resolution reaches the priority and the goals that you guys have, which is getting us back to a balanced budget, but also honoring our community and what they said.
Frank, do you have anything?
No, I think that's, I mean, the 3% growth, I think is a good number for people that way. They're not getting taxed out of the home out of 8%. You know, the average house in Young is not half a million dollars. And it's even grown now farther than that out into the country and stuff. You know, people bought their houses for a quarter million dollars and they're now 750,000, touch a million dollar homes that were, that worked that way 10, 15 years ago. And I can relate to that. You know, I bought my house in 2019. It's, you know, we have an assessed value of this and you're like, how can I afford that? How can I afford the taxes on that? It's an eye-opener for a lot of people when every single budget item that they're going through, it's just an increase, increase, increase. I think it's responsible to keep that at 3%. It not go higher than that.
Because any increase over 3% is going to reduce the base utility. Well, do you want any more discussion? Has anybody got anything to add to it?
No, I don't, I don't want, I don't want to tax everybody out of their home. That's not right at all. So I mean, if we can balance our budget at 3%, I think that's the responsible thing to do, right thing to do.
Well, I guess it's we have a motion, we have a first, we have a second, we have a third. We have, now we have to call for the vote?
Do a roll call.
Yes.
I have a roll call. Yes, I'll move that. And roll call is Frank?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
Debbie? Yes. Denise?
Yes.
All right. That's it?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I always because of
Now my mind's on what I have to do.
With all the numbers and, you know.
Yes. Are we on H2? Use of cell phones?
No, we are not with that.
Sorry. I got so many papers.
All right. So next, we're on the YCS F Convergent Plan for Advanced Academics.
Yes. And so this is something that we also do each year. And our special guest here, who is, do you hear?
Yes, I need a, I need a motion.
Yes.
Isaac. Okay.
Hi, I'm really glad to be here to talk about something that's hopeful for our future here at Young, which is advanced academics. Our advanced academics program is for students who demonstrate or show potential for performing at significantly advanced academic levels when compared to the others of their age, experiences or environments. Students may be referred for testing by a parent, teacher or community member. And in addition, we test all second graders and all fifth graders. That was a change last year. We added fifth grader. We're going to continue to be doing that. We use the COGAT, which is a cognitive abilities test to determine eligibility as well as our benchmark data that we use here at Young. And then we also make sure that we're including multi-lingual students by using WIDE scores and students with an IEP. We use our cognitive scores to make sure that we're including everyone in that. Everyone has a chance to show what they know. At Young Community Schools, teachers implement common core state standards with differentiation as a focus. Teachers use their knowledge of students and ongoing assessments to provide multiple mediums in which students can show their knowledge and skills. They provide differentiated instruction to students in the areas of English and math whose needs cannot be met through the core curriculum. They create environment which encourages divergent thinking, creative problem solving and higher level thinking. Okay, thank you. Are there any questions?
Are they tested? Are they tested in all areas or just one specific area? Or like, could a student just go for math, let's say?
Yes, we could. We, the second and fifth grade screeners, which is the majority of our testing, we use the COGAT and it tests all types of things. And then as we, we have what we call a multidisciplinary team that looks at those scores and they determine is it math, is it reading or is it both?
Some districts do a pull-out program where they may serve students in one location and less than across the district. Young has elected to serve the students in their neighborhood school. There are advantages and challenges to all types of scenarios. I oversaw ICAP program in Olympia and it was in one location and over time became a program that students were served in their buildings for a number of reasons. And families would oftentimes elect to not go to the program because students wanted to be with their neighbors and their friends. And so I think Young has made a very good choice in trying to serve and meet the needs of our students at their school so that they can stay there with their friends, with their neighbors. And I think it makes us a better district when we're able to meet the unique needs of our students in all our buildings, in all of our classrooms as opposed to pulling them out. And those students also contribute a lot to the entire school when they are there at their school. And you can imagine pulling them out. You're pulling out a portion of your student body that you want to have. And you want them represented. So I think Young has done as well. We can always improve. We're always trying to find ways to work better.
I think years and years ago, we did have them go to one building. We pulled them out. I think, I don't remember which year, but we started.
Thank you. We need a vote. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Policy revisions, additions?
All right, this is just first reading, so it's information only. This is information I shared with you at the retreat. And we've been talking about it as it relates to artificial intelligence. And we'll have Dr. Lisa Gere Smith come up and just share a little bit kind of 30,000-foot view that we've talked about. You guys have had a chance to actually look at the policy and the procedures. And so, Lisa.
Yeah, exactly. Right. So what we're doing here is making two provisions to two policies as well as their procedures, 2022 and 2023. Those are electronic resources and Those are electronic resources and internet safety and digital citizenship and media literacy. And then in addition, we've added two forms that are new. And that is a code of conduct and a youth pledge. And so if ever to take all of that detail in the policies and kind of synthesize it into three themes, I would capture it like this. It's about promoting ethical use and safety using clear AI language in our policies in order to guide students on ethical, safe, and respectful technology use, aligning our commitment to creating a safe and supportive learning environment. It's also about empowering future-ready skills. Integrating AI into our resources helps develop essential digital literacy and responsible technology skills, preparing our students to navigate and excel in a rapidly evolving digital world. And last, by embedding AI, we're opening doors to personalized learning, creativity, and transformative ways for students to experience growth and learning. The other piece I would add is that we're in communication regionally with partners and we're looking at safe tools that we could use that meet all of the internet safety guidelines that are closed, that don't let out student data, that have both teacher components and student components. So we do things like help teachers write lesson plans, help them differentiate instruction, provide tutoring for students and things like that. So we're really embracing this idea. We're doing it very, very safely. And we realize it's out there anyway. Our students have access to it anyway. And we really want to lay a strong foundation for its use in our district. Thank you.
Okay, that's just the information.
Yeah. Listen, if you have any questions on that. Real quickly, just as a reminder, I've shared this with you before, but this whole idea of artificial intelligence and education and across the country, kind of what they're showing is states are falling into one of three categories, not even talking about it or having any even remote idea of using it. Then the group in the middle, that third, would be, yeah, we're having conversations around AI. We're not quite sure about it, how it's going to be used in public education. And then there's a third where we would fall, are being proactive and having conversations and wanting to be ahead of the curve as it relates to creating policies and procedures around it so that we're not reacting. But I think everybody is trying to figure out how do we embrace it and use it as a teaching tool as opposed to just act like it's not common because it's already here.
Different. Okay. H, some information and discussion on student use of cell phones.
Yes, so this is a big, big topic. And as a board, you have had some interest in having a conversation about this and exploring the idea of maybe even policy and procedures in our district. So I want to share real quick what you have. You have Peninsula School District Policy and Procedures. They were one of the leaders in our state as far as implementing procedures around cellphone use by students. Kaylee's, we got Kaylee's attention now. She's going to say something about this. I want to share some information about what has happened in the Peninsula School District and how they have implemented and what it looks like in their district. We know that there's a strong data correlation between social, emotional, mental health challenges and cellphone use. That's undeniable. There's a lot of data out there that suggests cell phones are causing damage. And we are seeing it not just with students, but with adults. Some studies suggest that phones are also contributing to a lack of engagement at school. I don't think you need a study to tell you that that's true. Am I right, Kaylee?
You're right.
Yeah. But we've recently had some conversation about looking into this idea. Peninsula School District did a pilot at Peninsula High School a couple of years ago. And this was something that a high school had decided they wanted to do. So they did a pilot. Now the district is in their second full year of implementation as an entire district. Students can use cell phones before and after school and during lunch. That's it. So not in the hallways, not in the bathroom, which is always popular. Outside of those times, their phones need to be in their pocket, their backpack, or put away. The district does not take phones. They do not have students lock them up somewhere and the district or school is keeping an eye on them. They're teaching responsibility. They're being intentional about, it's your phone. We want you to put it away during class time. They work with PTOs to help the rollout and implementation and getting families to embrace the idea and help. So it's not something that's being done to students, but it's being done with families and with students. The district, they block social media sites. So in all their buildings, social media sites are blocked via Wi-Fi. Now, you can still get on them through data, but you just wouldn't be able to use Wi-Fi to access those, including the adults. They also have offered, I met with the superintendent of Peninsula School District this week and we talked for quite a while because I wanted to hear some of the pros and cons of their rollout. And she offered their administrators, primarily secondary, to have a conversation with our principals to talk about day-to-day operation and implementation of that. So what does it mean if a student violates this? You know, they're not taking away cell phones. They're not suspending students because of this. But they have seen quite a bit of positive change in student engagement. And one thing I also know is that many of our students don't have the willpower or the ability to separate themselves from their phones. They don't. And so I think some districts are saying, we've got to create boundaries and we've got to enforce those so that we can help our students separate themselves from phones. And then again, that other piece is, that means if I'm a teacher, I can't have mine out of you during class time. But they still have them. You know, we hear this, what about emergencies? They still have them. And so this district is not going so far as to say, we're taking them away, we're locking them up, we're suspending kids for using them. But it's working. I've also provided you over the last several weeks, several articles on this topic, but thought we would bring it here for conversation.
Well, and we also got the information from OSPI that they're coming out, not knowing when and what they're going to do. But, you know, we've been talking about it. I mean, I remember at the last conference and the conference before, you know. And certainly, there's enough research. And I don't know when OSPI said by the next year that they'd have to have, the schools that have to have a policy, does it say that in any place?
I don't recall them giving us a strict timeline, but they're certainly providing a lot of research and data that would suggest this is a positive approach. I'd be interested in hearing from Kaylee on her thoughts on cellphone use at school and how this might change your world and other schools.
I don't personally, I don't use my phone very much. I know what you're saying, something about social media and with the Wi-Fi and everything. The one thing about that is a lot of kids at the school use VPNs and that just kind of gets rid of the fact of the blocking of the social media because the VPN allows you to use it. I think it would definitely allow a lot of change if like phones were a little more strict on that. Because I know a lot of kids just like, most teachers really like, if you're done with your work, then you can be on your phone. But most kids will just be on their phone. They go with their work and that's what like has the downgrade of grades and everything. So like, teachers, I think there's just a little more strict on like how phones can actually be regulated, how they can be used throughout the day. But definitely the apology, they're like, for a case in more occasion, especially.
Thank you, Fisher.
Thank you.
What are your thoughts? Questions? I mean, what kind of information do you want? We brought this up with our administrators this week and just kind of threw out the idea. I think there's a lot of interest and I think there's no disagreement at the damage that these are causing.
Well, in one of the meetings, when we interviewed the kids for their, for student rep, you know, I think it was a young man spoke about no cell phones. And I remember, and there was a lot of staff there, that there was a lot of clapping, you know. And I think I just, to me, that just sort of clicked like, oh, there's more than this old person thinking that cell phone. When I read the, you know, all the studies and we always wait for studies, but there's certainly enough of them around the United States and even right here in Washington that what they've seen as being a positive influence on the kids. So I think we need to really do some.
I don't think sometimes the kids even realize how. They're like this instead of being engaged with a conversation with their friend. I mean, just think of their, we're all guilty of it. Sit down at the table. If you go to a restaurant, you'll see people sitting. I know, we're guilty of it. We go to the restaurant and everybody sits down. You're waiting for your food and, you know, whether you're playing a game or looking at a sports thing or whatever, and instead of having that conversation. And so I think the kids don't even realize that they're doing that.
But we're talking about it. But that's relaxing. That's a parent.
But I mean, no, that's even happening at lunchtime at school. And I know, I think they don't even realize that you're at school.
It's just a natural. But as far as bringing out the, you know, they're in the classroom for whatever, how many minutes, and they're supposed to be learning. They're supposed to be ready to learn. And, you know, the teachers are up there instructing. And, you know, I've heard teachers say, if I had, you know, a quarter for every time I ask a student to put the phone away, they'd be rich, they could retire. But I think that, you know, having the kids there, like Kaylee said, you know, it's a downturn with their grades because they're there for instruction. And the teachers have it hard enough with all the extra kids and all that. Even before, you know, it's a disruption.
I know, I just don't think, I just don't even think kids realize how much they're on. I don't even think they realize they do it. It's just how it goes.
Well, you know, the kids, you know, and even as far as the safety issue, like you say, we're not taking it away. It's just during class that they are there to learn and, you know, not be on their phone. It's that simple.
I think it's just a much-needed policy and it only goes as far as, I think we talked in the retreats, as it's enforced. I mean, I don't want educators to be, you know, policing kids all day long. That's exactly what it will be. You have 35 kids, play your phone, play your phone, you know, and then the kid gets it out again. But I definitely think it's much needed that people can actually engage in world conversations. Because there's nothing worse than talking to somebody and they go like this, you know, what are you doing today? You know, you realize a reading attempt. And then they just zoomed out wherever that conversation was, went there, and now will come back. I think it's really important for the kids to be able to engage in that.
And if the goal is to prepare them for the workforce, I mean, I see this with young engineers out of college. They can't function day-to-day in a work environment without being on their phone. Sometimes it gets them in trouble. So if we're going to start preparing kids for what the workforce entails, you're not always allowed to have fun in your day. So I do think it does probably serve some value.
There's a couple of things that I'd like to do moving forward is I'd like to get particularly a couple secondary administrators to be able to go visit Peninsula School District and just observe.
I'd like to go with.
How, yeah, that would be.
I'm technically challenged, but, you know, it's a thing where with a cell phone, you do get in, you know, you do get in growth. And at my age, and I'm paying attention in that, I'm not in a classroom. But, you know, it's a hard cycle to break. And I think it's, if we have, the end result is we want those students in there learning and to make it helpful, easier for a teacher to have their undivided attention, I think that the test scores will go up. And, you know, that's what we're asking. Like you say, when they get in the workforce, they, you know, if they're unbraced, that type of thing. I mean, I really, and then the amount of information that, and the studies are, it's just mind-boggling that you, like you say, don't realize that's what's happening to these young kids.
I think you also have to ask the teachers to not be on their phones. It has to be also the teachers. Because they're the ones that are setting an example. Because like we saw.
During class, I mean during, you know.
We talked about this, there was no snacks in class and the teacher was standing over the kid, eating his, having his snack, talking to him. You know, the example we gave him.
Yeah. The other thing I'd like to do is work with our student reps to get into school and then talk to students. And I would like us to spend some time having conversations with groups of students at by school in particular, even if it's a middle school, to have this conversation around what might that look like? And how would that impact you personally? And so I'd like to call on Kaylee and our other five reps to work with me to start having some conversations with our students about this. And then the other group that I mentioned that Peninsula School District worked with is our PTOs. I'd like to have a conversation with them because really, for this to work, it has to be a community initiative. It cannot just be schools. We are not parents. Contrary to what people may believe, we are not parents. We often stand in that gap and serve in a similar role. But this has to be a community initiative. This has to be something that we do together. It cannot be something that, you know, I stand back as a dad and say, well, that's on you. Good luck, because I can't do it at home. No, we're going to have to work together on this.
And I think that's important. You know, educating the parents if they can't get a hold of their kid 24/7, you know, if they have breaks, that they can reach out to you, you know, not sending a message to your kid in the middle of the day. Hello, are you there? You know, educating the parent in that process too. I think it's going to be important.
I had read an article on it and I've been looking for it. I know I saved it. And it was an article, and I think it was from, it was a large school district. And I wanted to say it was in the Midwest. And that's probably been from the Midwest that I perked my, you know, what were they saying back there? Anyway, they found that they had let, when they did the no cellphone policy, that they found that it helped especially in the middle school and the high school as far as less bullying and less, you know, fighting and, you know, that type of a thing. And I was, I thought that it might, but it was a real interesting, interesting article as they took the data from when there was cell phone and everything. Because even if they're, and I don't know how they do it, but, you know, they're texting, you know, meet me at the, you know, bathroom and, you know, we're going to fight or however, that's what they found that it really, it didn't all go away, but it surely helped in handling the bullying and that type of a thing. and that type of a thing, so.
Okay, well, Kaylee and I are going to work on this, right? And we will continue to bring you information. I will also continue to keep you in the loop on opportunities to go visit.
Yeah.
Particularly the Peninsula School District where it's now in year two of implementation. I think it'll be good to see it. And we'll, we'll talk some more on this.
Okay, next, I, business advertising sponsorships.
This one, you know, I don't want to take a ton of time this evening unless you do. Really what I want to point your attention to is, I believe it's the one on top. I'll see, 4238, business advertising sponsorships. You look at page three, it's highlighted on top. So just to boil it down, I think this really kind of came to light with the levy failure budget cuts and conversation around fundraising sponsorships. We have policy, we have procedures that speak to this. Currently, our policy says that funds obtained through advertising sponsorships shall be used for improvements to and maintenance of district facilities as designated by the board. The only caveat to that is it's got to be equitable, so you can't go just fix up the baseball field for the boys and not do anything to the fast pitch field. So the reason I'm bringing this to you is because there's been conversation around advertising, particularly we got, you know, an inquiry around putting advertisement above the scoreboard at the stadium. And they wanted, this particular group wanted to pay the district $5,000 a year to have their name up there.
For 99 years, for, for open ended.
Okay, for, for a while, yes. And so it just brings up the bigger conversation. Number one, is this where we want funds to go? Or is there somewhere else we would want those funds to be distributed to? Number two, as far as when those come to us, bringing those and saying, hey, we're going to take it on an individual case by case basis and determine whether or not we're going to allow that particular sponsorship or whatever that may be. This hasn't been something that's been used very much. I know in the past it was a Beto's sponsorship at the stadium on the scoreboard at one time. Aside from that, I don't, it has not been a regular occurrence. It has not been something you would necessarily see in our gyms, on our fences of our fields. So this is an area that, that is, has been sparingly used.
We brought it up and discussed it before the high school was remodeled, the turf and the middle school. And we talked about advertisement as, at the new school, the new scoreboard. And we talked about it and the discussions were like, if you're going out for a large sum, say I'll just use $5,000 a year, that it had to be opened up to all businesses in the district. That we couldn't go out for a bid.
Yes.
That we couldn't, we couldn't pick and choose. It was that we weren't trying to, the Good Old Boy series or anything like that. So we did discuss some of those things. And then I'm not sure if we discussed, because before we took the fence, didn't we have, when we put the new set for the visitors, wasn't there business emblems on the old fence or not? Can you remember? Well, that was a different thing, that was a smaller amount. That wasn't like 5,000.
They would hang them for certain events and then they would give them.
Okay, so they never paid $100 for that?
I'm not aware of it.
Okay. But, but then we, I know we discussed like, well, if we could just get 5,000, well, geez, maybe we could get 10,000, you know, type of a thing. So it was discussed, but the bottom line was is if we're going to have that, we have to have it offered to everybody, everybody. And then the final is, is if there's 15 people and it wouldn't go for open ended forever and ever, it would be whatever we chose that was reasonable that other ones had, you know, done. Because I remember it was the old telephone company years back, you know, before Xfinity and all these things that were involved, that you had to open it up to different, everybody. So that's, that's my only thing is that I think it's a good idea and like you say, where do the funds go? Because it has to be equitable and, you know, but it's got to be open to everybody. Because we already get beat up that we're not being transparent, we're not being fair, and it's mismanaged. So that's my two cents on it.
I think what we would like to do, Jennifer and I have had a lot of conversation, we'd like to create some systems and processes around this so that it's consistent across the district. So a sign board is X number of dollars for this amount of time. And then it is consistent in the community. It can be advertised, hey, who, who would like to? And, you know, maybe it's unlimited, maybe we can do a higher number. But something like on top of the scoreboard, we would need to set the amount and then put it out to people who are interested. And like you said, not just because if somebody came forward and then there would need to be a process for selection. I just think that, I think this can be a really good thing, especially in our community, to, to allow our local businesses and others to advertise and give back to our, our district. But there needs to be a clear process and there are guidelines for that and not just kind of done on a whim here and there, which I think is kind of the way it's going.
Who bought, who, about the new, that's not the original scoreboard. That scoreboard at the high school is new, right?
It's, there's a side note.
It is, it is new based on what you're referring to.
Right, and at the time, it seemed like, I'll just say centrally, I don't know, some Xfinity, somebody would have done something different with the scoreboard, but we chose not to go that way.
Pepsi was on our old scoreboard, we had newer awards in Southwood.
Yeah, Pepsi was on it.
And we never did like that one back out after we moved it. Now we have a new one and there is room on that to hang a sponsorship.
Thank you for clarifying that. Yeah, I think that's the way it has to be, you know, we have to be fair to everybody in the.
And then the other piece that I want you to think about, you don't have to give us any thoughts still, is just that part that's highlighted around where those funds go. I'll come back to it later time to say, is that, are we that as is? Or are there other areas you want those funds to go? I'll just throw out the, the idea that most districts, when they put in the type of facilities that we have, we've got fantastic facilities. Typically, they've got a plan for turf replacement.
Yes, and, you know, that, I remember discussing that when we put the turf.
So we're about five years or so from having to replace turf at the stadium. We don't have a plan in place for replacement across our district. And so I believe that was the intent here, was for these funds to help offset those costs. And so I think it would be wise for us to take the initiative to do more here in this area to help with that, so.
No, well.
Okay. More on that.
Okay. I'm still on the lines.
Okay.
Okay, resolution 04-24-25 YCS Transportation TI Bid Award Recommendation.
I move to approve.
My second.
Chris is back, one more time tonight.
This is just for our information, the student fundraising.
Yes, that was all part of that last discussion. All three of those were the same.
Thank you.
All right, for Transportation TI, which is just a ten improvement over at the Transportation Department, Andy Johnson Company is our parental bidder. Tavani Hart Professional Corporation has checked references for Andy Johnson Company, confirmed their ability to meet the project schedule, verified that they acknowledge that the project is subject to relevant wage requirements and that there are no bid abnormalities. Andy Johnson Company has provided their completed contractor qualification form and appears to meet criteria of the bid documents. Our base bid, $831,000. Alternate bid number two, number one, which is the concrete patio we chose to move forward with on the back of the building, $31,900. Alternate bid number two, which is a polished concrete floor, came in at $0 because they said they needed to prep the floor for VCT or sheet vinyl, so the polishing they threw in added a zero cost. Alternate bid number three, $5,000, which is upper case work cabinetry in the occupied space. Alternate bid number four was a loan in the storefront, which we chose to reject that bid because it will not blend in with the rest of the building. Total bid, $867,900. We being Trent, Tavani Hart and myself recommend that Young Community Schools award the bid to Andy Johnson Company. Any questions? There's a lot of stuff to listen to. I did supply you guys all the sort of supporting documents.
Do you guys put an engineer's, is an engineer's estimate together before going up to bid?
When we did the feasibility study, yes.
What was the?
I think we came in at 1.1 million. So one thing I got to add, Trent Hart with Tavani Hart and his assistant Jane have been fantastic work with. It reminds me of the old days, working with John Erickson and Arayna. Very good choice of concrete architecture.
Do you have any other questions?
And you recall how this project's funded?
Yes, it's not out of levy dollars. It's other, leftover money, am I correct?
Yeah.
Good.
So for the record.
Just for the record.
This project is well needed. That transportation department, of course, you can see, they have two restrooms for roughly about 80 people over there.
But they can't even have staff being there.
That's two stalls.
We've been talking about it for years and it always gets put on the backboard.
It, it will be a nice addition for those community employees. Well.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
So could I ask one more question? Do we have a roof at Southworth over the plate?
Robyn's been amazing, by the way, thank you, but no permit. She's, she's worked with me, I've got several calls from her. Appreciate the help.
Thank you. Not yet, there's not a lot of help. Okay, we are at, or did we vote?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we voted. Vouchers and payroll.
I move to approve.
My second.
Any discussion?
Yes, my amazing financial partner, Jennifer Brownell, had to step out but she interviewed vouchers for the board president before the meeting.
Yes.
And recommended for approval.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carried. Facilities reports.
I think we approve.
Back.
They should have waited to ask you that question, I didn't agree far enough.
Ah, yeah, sure, your board pack.
Can you give me a second?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Think your, your board pack, it contains this past month's completed public works projects. Here to answer any questions may have and recommend for approval.
Lots of work.
And good thanks, you'll, you'll probably notice as you go around our schools, updated reader boards.
Yes.
That's been a huge, huge upgrade and change. A lot of work, a lot of planning and thanks to Chris, you know, directing that work. I think our schools are pleased with new reader boards and, and we can do a lot more with those to communicate with our families.
Actually, work pretty well, they're well seen, with the exception of Fort Stevens. Lisa Levy takes the trees down, will she leave already?
Yeah, she is.
Sir, it's blocked a little bit by some trees, so I'm going to do some selective treeing when nobody's around.
How could they retire that? Chris out there with his sock.
You'll be surprised.
Under the darkness.
No, it looks good, thank you, Chris. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carried.
David, we do have the permit for the transportation going already. I got it for a month.
Well, you only got a month and then you're, you know what other luck. Financial reports.
Yes. Jennifer.
Me again? I'll be very brief, it's a late night. So we don't have any slides for this. Basically, I just kind of wanted to tell you where we're at with closing of our books for 2324 and what my estimated projection is for fund balance with a disclaimer that we're not done closing yet. We're still doing journal entries, we're still doing a lot of reconciliation. So typically, the closing process would start about middle of September. And because of our retro payment, David and Urstadt had to do a lot of work to collect a lot of data to get to the ESD so they could help them. They had to do a lot of work on their side. So by the time it was posted, it was October 11th. And then we had to submit our final grant things once we have those numbers on, the following Tuesday, the 15th. So basically, I started closing about nine days ago, eight days ago. So there's still a lot to do. The preliminary financial report is due to the ESD tomorrow and they know where I'm at. And I'll submit it and they'll send it back. And then I'll have next week to try and hurry and complete everything and submit a final by, my goal's in next week. OSBI asks to certify it by November 15th. So with all of those disclaimers, I wanted to say, we'll talk about the estimated projection for fund balance. It's not final, again, but we're looking at about 4.6 million. And the last projection I presented to you was 5.9 million, which included a million, I had thrown in a million dollar buffer for our retro payment, possible retro payment. But as we know, it was much larger than anticipated. So it ended up being 6% at a $2.5 million. So if we take another $1.5 million out of that 5.9 or 4.4, we're ending a little bit better than that because costs came in, MSOT costs and salaries came in lower than anticipated in August. So we had a couple hundred thousand dollars there, which I'm, I'm very conservative, so we typically do. But I have to be conservative to be responsible. So that's where we're at. I'll have more information at the next meeting and go over some of the fund balance history and tell you where we ended exactly. And then I will be able to start projecting 2425 and new fund balance. Any questions?
Thank you.
Denise wants to say something, I can tell.
I'm not gonna.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not gonna.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Student enrollment report.
Yeah, Jennifer, may I, I'll be with this one. Yeah, yeah. So, you know, notice enrollment is less than September. We had, after doing some careful research and digging, that a couple of schools that did not have students show up that were enrolled by the four day count, day four. So those students were counted and should not have been counted, which then brings that number down. And then actually, in October, we increased students by 16.
16.85.
16.85, it was close. So what happened though is our September was off because it was two buildings that inadvertently did not back out. Some students that were enrolled but did not show up in days one, two, three or four, which means we cannot count them and we have to back them out. And then in October, what we saw is an increase. And then in October, what we saw is an increase at the elementary level as a whole and a slight decrease at secondary.
Yeah, so I wasn't as psychic as everybody thought at the last meeting when we were only 19 under, we're now 43 under, but we hope to gain some of that back. Like I mentioned, our historical growth in October from September is typically 50 or more, and it's only 16.85. Some of that's due to withdrawals. And some of the initial reporting was due to some withdrawals too that were counted, unfortunately. So that's, that's where we're at. So we will hope to gain some of that back in the next several months. And we'll be watching it closely. But that amounts, that equates to about 10,000 per student, about $430,000 in the deficit from monthly projected for.
Okay, thank you. Oh, it is a long night. I think I can talk for four hours. We have two minutes, David, let anyone decide.
Do you guys like the stuff I'm using? I really appreciate like getting more script on that and like helping students actually have more opportunities to learn and like get more out of like actually going to school rather than just like being sucking the void of your phone. And how you're basically saying that if you just don't notice if you're doing it, a lot of kids just be done, they start scrolling, and they just don't stop if they don't have self-control. But I really appreciate going on with that and also, actually, it was also awesome.
All right, onto me. I just want to say thank you for all the teachers or educators that might still be here, but probably not. You guys are amazing people. I'm married to one, it takes a special person to do what you guys do. Everyone admin, I see the awesome relationships you have with your staff. That's huge support and it creates a culture within your building. Because I've been to buildings where that culture isn't there and you can see it and the students aren't packed about it. So I just want to say thank you for that. I know we covered a lot around tonight. There's a lot that went on this week and over the past week. And I just encourage people to stay off social media if you can. I know that's hard, maybe putting away your cell phones will help that. Because I think there's a lot of productivity that can come out of meetings like this. You see a lot of good in the community when you're a part of meetings like this and you're just not keyboard warriors out there, so that's all I have.
Yeah. I want to congratulate all the award winners as well. It was a really nice way to start off the meeting. And then another nice thing about tonight was all the gifts. The generosity of this community has been shown month in, month out. I prefer to focus on that unity and not the division on social media because I think this is what actually defines this community. It's just not necessarily done as loud as some of the negative stuff is done. Final thing I want to say is I really appreciate Superintendent Woods' words on transparency at the beginning of this meeting because I know that is a very hot topic. And I do agree that any elected officials and public officials should be very transparent with the community. And so I think, appreciate any strides we make forward on that. But I do also, now being here, understand that you can't respond to everything in the moment because there is so much out there and you will be constantly bombarded with stuff that's not true. So I think transparency is a good goal for us for this year. I think that it'll help us.
Denise?
Well, I was trying to scroll here on my phone. So the scores for the football.
Yes, I was going to add, does anybody have any score?
And I did see Bill posted 15 to 0, 56 minutes ago.
60 and 50 is going to be.
I think it's y'all. Is it y'all? Let's try, I just took my phone out now. Otherwise, it's in there.
Okay.
Yeah. Otherwise, I didn't have it. But I went to the choir concert last night and, Lord, we have, we just have.
All activity.
All activity. Kids in our community. And then congratulations to our upcoming kids that are national.
I do need to make a correction. She did not complete employment skills, she competed in prepared public speech.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I said it out loud, I was like, I know I'm saying this wrong.
Yeah, I wondered that, I know I read.
Prepared public speech, yeah.
Yeah, so there's that. And then I've attended a couple of football games, but yeah, the choir concert was a, got to have a little taste of the students that are going to go to Carnegie Hall in the spring, so.
I don't have anything to say, I've spoken enough tonight. I can't remember if I've done anything for the last couple of weeks, so I'll turn it over to you.
Well, you've done plenty.
We have to laugh, I mean, really. It's the end of a long night, so. It's a good meeting, I might say that, very.
22 to 0, just going into half right now, halftime. That's y'all, so. You know, I just, I just want to say it's been a long 16 months, really, not week. But I got to say a big thank you to our staff. We have amazing people here. And, and we've seen this week in particular and the weeks in the past where people are quick to say things and, and just tear down specific people in our, in our district. And it's just heartbreaking. And, and the one thing that, that stuck with me, and I've shared this time and time again when in my roles and leadership, that tends to happen. And my wife told me one time that, she said, that these people don't know you. And so I always fall back on people that make these comments don't know those people that they're speaking about because if they did, it wouldn't be saying those things. And that goes for our teacher at YMS, who's an amazing person and has done an outstanding job. And it goes for every other employee in our district. And I would encourage anybody that has something negative to say to reach out. If you got concerns or questions, I'm more than happy to meet you anywhere, anytime and have a conversation. And if I can't introduce you to that person that you want to say something about so you can actually meet them. I just, I truly believe that if they knew us and the people in our district, they would say the things that they say on social media.
That's it?
That's all I got tonight.
Wow. I was just kidding when I said two minutes. Thank you. Oh, we have a meeting, I put my stuff away. When's the next meeting?
November 1st.
November 21st.
November 21st.
Just one meeting.
Yes, because we should have been. New jersey, thanks, everybody.